All right, Mayor, I think we're ready when you are.
All right. Austin, you say we're ready? Okay. All right, welcome everybody to our series of meetings tonight, February eighth, twenty twenty one. We're going to start with the Crime Control Prevention Convention, Crime Control Prevention District Meeting, followed by the FCP EMSD meeting and ending with a special session. There are various parts of citizen comments for each meeting. So if you signed up for citizen comments for the various portions, we will, we will get to you. So we'll get started with CCPD, open the meeting, call the meeting to order. And everybody is, we have a quorum, Madam Secretary.
Yes.
Citizen comments, any person who desires to address the Crime Control and Prevention District Board regarding an item on the agenda will be heard at this time in compliance with Textual Meanings Act. Unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and CCPD members are not allowed to discuss the subject. Each person is limited to five minutes for comments to CCPD board. Laura, it's my understanding that we don't have anybody signed up to speak for this particular citizen comment?
That's correct.
All right, so we'll move along to item C, consider approval of the minutes for CCPD meeting held on August seventeenth, twenty twenty. Do you have a motion?
I move, we approve those minutes.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? Move into item D, receive resolution twenty twenty one dash zero five from the City Council of the City of Jersey Village requesting a referendum on the continuation of the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District for five years. Has my name on it, but I think I'm going to go ahead and toss this over to Austin.
Actually, Mayor, basically, this is just a housekeeping measure. You just need to announce for the record that we, that you did receive that resolution twenty one, twenty twenty one dash five.
Roger that, I will announce for the record that I did receive it. And that will move us, there's no motion or action on this item, right? That's it.
That's it, thank you.
Move into item E, consider resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero one, ordering a special election to be held on May first, twenty twenty one, for the purpose of holding a referendum on the continuation of the district and providing details relating to holding of such, such election. So this is an item that we discussed last city council meeting. This is really just to sort of line up the districts. If we do move forward with a, a fire, fire control essentially district, we want to make sure that the elections to reauthorize them are lined up every single cycle. Do I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero one, second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, motion carries?
Who was that second?
Not me.
James Singleton, I believe.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll move into item F, we will adjourn.
And it's seven oh five.
At seven oh five. Jerry, thanks so much.
You're welcome. That was quick.
Yes. All righty. Let's move on to the next agenda. There we go.
What are we doing next?
Fire, the FCP EMSD board meeting. So I'll go ahead and open the meeting, call it to order, and Madam Secretary, Quorum is present?
Yes.
Moving to citizen comments, any person who desires to address the City of Jersey Village Temporary FCP EMSD Board regarding an item on the agenda will be heard at this time. In compliance with Textual Meanings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and temporary directors are not allowed to discuss the subject. Each person is limited to five minutes for comments to the board. Lori, is there anybody signed up to speak?
No, we, I do believe that Mr. Malloy has signed up to speak during the public hearing section, so I don't have anybody for this particular.
Public hearing part, we will, we will get.
Lori?
Yes.
I took and I requested to be able to speak for this. I, I, I requested to speak for this and for the regular council meeting, the regular special council meeting.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Malloy, there, there's going to be a, a public hearing, and I, I may have misunderstood you, but I thought you wanted to speak during the public hearing section, session of this meeting and not during public comments, is that correct?
So with the public comments versus the, the other part that you're talking about, is the individual limited to the five minutes on either one of those to speak? Or if it's the public hearing, is the individual allowed to speak for a longer period of time than five minutes?
That would be up to the mayor.
I think we're going to go and limit that to five minutes on each one.
Okay, so what you're saying is that there's two different parts of this meeting. There's the part, there's two, there's two times that I can speak during this meet, this part of the meet.
Correct, you can, you can do, you can do a public comment right now, and you can do a public comment during the public hearing portion. Did you want to do both or, or one or the other?
Yeah. That's what I wanted to.
You want to do both, okay, go ahead, Mark.
Hey, Mark Malloy, seventy eight oh three, Hamilton Circle, past city council member of the City of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens comments for the O two, O eight, twenty twenty one, special city council meeting and public hearings covering the the dis, the fire control prevention and emergency medical services district. Please make my verbal comments and written documents given to the city secretary a permanent record of this meeting. I am speaking and asking questions during the citizens' comments portion of tonight's meeting to ask questions about the city government's desire to create a fire control prevention and medical services district and the appointment of the mayor, five city council members and the city manager to serve as a temporary board of directors. The city government back in the year nineteen ninety five asked the Jersey Village citizens to approve, and the citizens did approve the allocation of one half of a cent of the sales tax collected by the city for what is called the sales tax for property tax relief fund. This fund in the year twenty twenty brought in one million nine hundred and sixty four thousand one hundred and sixty one dollars. The city government is now wanting to take a half of the half percent from the sales tax for property tax relief fund and use it for the city government's newly formed fire control prevention and medical services district, which if in effect last year would have taken nine hundred and eighty two thousand eighty dollars from the sales tax for property tax relief fund and would have potentially caused the Jersey Village citizens taxpayers to pay more property taxes. The question I'm asking the city government tonight on this agenda item is, are you, the Jersey Village city government, going to give the Jersey Village taxpayers that have a state of Texas homestead exemption filed with the Harris County? Their full state of Texas allowed twenty percent homestead exemption instead of the fourteen percent homestead exemption you're giving them at this time? And are you going to give the disabled and sixty five year and older Jersey Village citizens the additional one hundred and sixty thousand dollar homestead exemption? That Harris County and the city of Houston are giving their citizens instead of the seventy five thousand dollar exemption that you're giving the Jersey Village citizens currently? Are you, the Jersey Village city government, going to state to the Jersey Village taxpayers that you will give the Jersey Village citizens this year the above mentioned homestead property tax increases that I have come before the city government many, many times previously to ask that the Jersey Village city government do for the Jersey Village citizen? If the Jersey Village city government is asking the Jersey Village citizens to forego half of the half percent sales tax for property tax relief revenue, then I think it is only right that the Jersey Village city government give the Jersey Village taxpayers the increases of homestead exemptions I have been asking for the Jersey Village community. The city of Jersey Village, Texas, city government per diem has stockpiled an estimated seventeen point five million dollars that they are now planning to spend on multi, multi million dollar projects without the Jersey Village taxpayers being allowed to vote during a regularly held special election to make the decision if they, the taxpayers, want their city government to spend the city revenue on the very expensive projects. The question I'm, I am asking the Jersey Village city government at this city council meeting is, why are you, the city government, now asking the Jersey Village taxpayers for their approval to take city revenue from the sales tax for property tax relief fund? Is there a law that requires the city government to ask the Jersey Village taxpayers for their approval on this specific government want? Over the thirteen years that I've lived in the city of Jersey Village, Texas, I have heard the statement from council members, the people elected me to make the decisions. I personally don't, and I also don't believe the other citizens of Jersey Village, Texas, want their city government to circumvent the rights of the Jersey Village taxpayers from being allowed to vote on an election ballot to make the decision to decide if they wanted to spend their city revenue to purchase an estimated thirty three point nine acres of land for an estimated eight point two million dollars located on the south side of US two ninety, which the city government has already done, or relocate and build a new city hall on the south side of US two ninety for an estimated eight million dollars, which the city government is going to force down the Jersey Village taxpayer throats. I believe the city government is only willing to allow the Jersey Village citizens taxpayers to vote on multi, multi million dollar projects and other issues that the city government wants approved, if only when the city government has the belief that the overwhelming odds are the Jersey Village taxpayers will approve the city government's wants, or the city government is required by Texas state law to ask the Jersey Village citizens taxpayers for their approval to endear, end debt the Jersey Village citizen taxpayers.
That's five minutes. I'm going to, you have an opportunity to come, to make another five minute comments in a couple of minutes, so give me one second. All right. So we will move into item C, election of temporary board president and vice president. Let me open my packet here. All right, so essentially, we just need to elect this temporary board president and vice president. Do I have a nomination motion?
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. President, I nominate Andrew Mitchum to be president and Bobby Warren to be vice president of the FCP EMSD.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion of the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? All right, we will move into I am D, conduct a public hearing for the purpose of giving all interested parties the right to appear and be heard on the proposed fire control prevention district and emergency medical services districts to your plan and to your budget. Let me open my script real quick. I now call to order this public hearing on the two-year plan and to your budget for the City of Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District. Everyone desiring to speak at this hearing should complete a public hearing comment card and present the card to the city secretary. Each speaker will have five minutes for, to present information concerning the two-year plan and to your budget. Mr. Malloy, do you desire to speak?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. So from the other information I read, the city government basically is wanting to take a half of the half cent, that half of the half cent to fund this fire control prevention and medical services district. And basically, you know, they're going to end up, as of last year, the sales tax for property tax relief fund collected a million nine hundred and sixty four thousand one hundred and sixty one dollars. And if that fire control prevention and medical services district was in effect last year, basically, they would have taken nine hundred and eighty two thousand eighty dollars and fifty cents from the sales tax for property tax relief fund. So anyway, basically, I'm going to read the rest of what, you know, I feel is going on with the city and why they're trying to get this money to fund this new district. And so basically, over the thirteen years that I've lived in the city of Jersey Village, Texas, I've heard the statement from council members, the people elected me to make the decisions. I personally don't, and I also don't believe the other citizens of Jersey Village, Texas, want their city government to circumvent the rights of the Jersey Village taxpayers from being allowed to vote on an election ballot to make the decision to decide if they want to spend their city revenue to purchase an estimated thirty three point nine acres of land for an estimated eight point two million dollars located on the south side of US two ninety, which the city government has already done, or relocate and build a new city hall on the south side of US two ninety for an estimated eight million dollars, which the city government is going to force down the Jersey Village taxpayer throats. I believe the city government is only willing to allow the Jersey Village citizens taxpayers to vote on multi, multi million dollar projects and other issues that the city government wants approved when, only, only when the city government has the belief that the over, overwhelming odds are the Jersey Village taxpayers will approve the city government's wants, or the city government is required by Texas state law to ask the Jersey Village citizens taxpayers for their approval to end debt the Jersey Village citizens taxpayers through a bond referendum. The Jersey Village city government has solved that problem by intentionally accumulating, stockpiling tens of millions of dollars. The city of Jersey Village, Texas, city government is trying to say they need to take money from the enacted in nineteen ninety five sales tax for property tax relief fund. I find their request wrong. The reason I believe it was, is wrong is because the city government is collecting hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars more than they need to operate the city through many types of revenue, revenue streams. The city government has the funds to pay for the fire department's needs without taking money from the sales tax for property tax relief fund. The city government just has a never ending need for more and more money to spend. And that's my comments for that.
Thank you, Mark. All right. There being no one else is daring to speak, I now close this public hearing for the two-year plan and two-year budget of the City of Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention Prevention and Emergency Services, Emergency Medical Services District. And with that, we'll move into item E, consider resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero one, adopting a two-year plan and a two-year budget for the Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District. Does anybody have any comments from their packet?
I have a question, is this, is this pretty much a duplicate of what our, our, our current fire department emergency services budget? Would this represent that current budget essentially?
Correct, for, for the, for the vast majority of it, there's a couple of things that we couldn't find out of this district, so those aren't in there, but yeah, all these numbers came straight from the, the current fire department budget.
Okay.
And, and the communications department as well for the communications technology equipment.
And all, all the items are of course eligible for this district's funds, correct?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions? All right. I'm looking for a motion on item E, consider resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero one.
I moved, we approved resolution or twenty twenty one dash zero one, adopting the two-year plan and budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? All right. And we will move to item F, consider ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero four pertaining to a joint order of the temporary board of directors of the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Services, Emergency Medical Services District and the city council of the City of Jersey Village ordering a special election to be held on May twenty first, twenty twenty one. Lori?
Yes, Mr. President, this item is to join, for the temporary board to join with the City of Jersey Village for a special election for the purpose of submitting to the voters two ballot propositions that were outlined in the item you called. And I wanted to call your attention that it is also for the approval of a joint election agreement with temporary board in the City of Jersey Village to run that election. There was some errors in the meeting packet on the joint election agreement wherein it stated in the first couple of paragraphs that the amount that would be appropriated would be one percent, one and a half percent. And I have since corrected that to, to correctly state that the rate that we're asking for, to fund the fire control district is one half of one percent. And the amount that would be eliminated for the property tax relief is one half of one percent. And this item is to just call that election, that joint election with the City of Jersey Village.
Okay, great, thank you. Any, any questions for Lori? Seeing none, looking for a motion?
No, I didn't have a question. Lori, sorry. I did hear a little bit of discussion and then Mark made some comments, so I just want to clarify some things for people that might be misunderstanding. First off, it's not one half of one half of one percent, it's half of a percent. And we're abolishing that one half percent that's going to property tax relief and moving it to this district. That does not, however, raise anybody's taxes as part of this. Is calculations now as part of SB two and it, no one will see a rise in their property taxes because of this. And several of us on council have spoken how we're interested in raising over sixty five and homestead exemptions. However, we can't vote on that right now because that's, it's not that time of year. We only have a small window to do that, and it's going to be after this election. So there's not a point in any of us discussing it since this council won't be voting on that. That is about all I have to say.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, to, to piggyback on that, last year, we kind of had a global pandemic where doing anything with finances was a little more tricky. So I think a lot of us had committed to raising the, the homestead exemption to twenty percent and looking at raising the over sixty five and disabled exemption to, to whatever we, we would be able to, but the unpredictability of twenty twenty, which baffled economists around the world. Even though we did really well, there was no way to really tell that that would happen. So I, I think, yeah, there was no point in discussing it right now. We have raised, this council has raised the homestead exemption before, we have lowered taxes. And I think that going forward, the tradition of Jersey Village is to look at what our plans are for capital improvements for, you know, this particular item is the fact that we're bringing on full-time firefighters. We're, we're, we're bringing on, I believe, four or more positions that are full-time paid firefighters because we're just simply not able to maintain the volunteer firefighter's ability to, to, to assist day, day to day, even though they still do a fantastic job. It's just very different to be a volunteer firefighter these days than it was ten, twenty, thirty years ago. So there's some costs that are definitely growing with our firefighters, with our fire department, with our EMS district. And this seems like a pretty responsible way to, to tie the success of our businesses in Jersey Village and the fact that we are working overtime to bring in better businesses to increase our sales tax base, which we have done quite substantially over the last five years and tie that to, to, you know, when we get more businesses, when we get more people here, there's going to be more demand for fire services, more demand for EMS services, just like we have more demand for police services. And this seems like some, a very good way to tie that demand and, in with, in, in with the city's growth and success with our economic development. So, yeah, I would definitely just make sure that you reach out to future candidates and make sure that you align with their, their views and their goals when it comes to homestead exemptions with over sixty five exemptions, disabled exemptions. But also just be very, very careful with how we do things as a city for the last fifty plus years, which is make sure that we maintain the services that make the city great. Continue doing that.
Just makes me sad to see people use misinformation to say that we're taking money away from over sixty five people and giving it to the fire department. This is not even anywhere near the truth.
It's much easier. Go ahead, Justin.
Sorry, this, this is Justin, I just, if you're not done, if you're not done talking and continuing, I just had some, a comment to make on, on some of the language of the order.
Go ahead, Justin.
Okay, so that, this is, in addition to the change that Lori mentioned and the, you have a draft version of the agreement there that said one and one half percent, she's correct, she caught that error. In the actual order itself and with the proposed ballot language and proposition A, subsequent to, we're creating the package, we, we are, we've been in contact with the Texas, Texas comptroller about the language of this proposition. And specifically because what's kind of annoying about the state law is they provide you with the exact language you need to use to create the district. But in a situation like this where you're eliminating one tax and, and this would be essentially a replacement tax for it, there's no language provided for the abolition of the other tax. And so what you have in your packet, I think the way we had worded it, essentially, it's going to be semantics, but, but it's, it's not what the comptroller recommended. And the way you have proposition A listed in your packet, it says, and I'm just going to read it so we're all clear, creation of the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District dedicated to fire safety and emergency medical services programs. And then this is where we're going to switch, it says, and abolition of the one half of one percent sales tax, property tax relief and concurrent adoption of sales tax at a rate of one half of one percent to fund the district. We sent that language like that to the comptroller, and they're suggested amendment to it was not so much about anything that's concluded, they suggested flipping the, the abolition part with the concurrent part. So what I would suggest that, that the temporary board approve and recommend to council for adoption is this language. And I'm going to read this verbatim, the creation of the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District dedicated to fire safety and emergency medical services programs and the adoption of a sales tax at a rate of one half of one percent to fund the district and the concurrent abolition of the one half of one percent sales tax for property tax relief. And so I would suggest that if the board wants to approve this order, that you, you just amend it with suggested changes, and that would include the, the, just rewording of proposition A and then the language and the, and the joint order agreement that Lori pointed out.
Yeah, thank you, Justin.
Justin, they had, they're, they're all ready to go to give you advice on to create the tax, but didn't have language for abolishing it. Was it because it's an abolishment increase at the same time, or do they not normally have language for abolishing taxes?
If, if you look up in the, in the portion of the tax code, it deals with all of the sales tax different uses, and one of those is the property tax relief. It has everything in there, how to create it, but nothing about how to abolish the tax. And so how, how the comptroller has dealt with that, you know, I think, I think we've discussed this here and one of your council meetings is, you know, what do you do in this kind of situation if you're trying to create something and abolish something at the same time? Is it two separate items, or do you, or do you do what, I mean, it seems like a red flag to an attorney would be, you take the state, the statutory language and amend the language? What do you do? And so what they're, the comptroller, they provided three or four examples that, that cities have done this almost exact same thing. And what they have allowed is you, and the reason the flip on the thing is because the first portion of the, of this proposition A as amended is directly, is directly from the statute, it's, it's the state statute. And what they want, what they prefer you to do is just augment that and add the portion for abolishing the other tax. And the reason they do that is because, A, they, I guess they recognize in their system that there's not a statutory provision, statutory providing language that abolishes the tax. And they understand that what that would do if you tried to have two different ballot propositions. And they understand that what that would do if you tried to have two different ballot propositions, eliminating one tax and approving another. You know, if one of those doesn't go through, like say the abolishment doesn't go through and then you adopt a tax and now you're over your limit, that that could be very problematic. And so um I think that's why they do it, it's just they they understand some situations that um, you know, if you, if a vote, if a vote of the citizens created the tax, a vote of the citizens has to abolish the tax. And so in a situation like this, you have to have some kind of augmented language. But this, the the reason I'd I'd like you to approve it, if you approve it as augmented or as amended as we suggested, it's just because that's that's been approved by the comptroller and suggested by them um to follow, you know, systems of how other cities have done this kind of situation.
Okay, very interesting, this state with history of conservatism and small government and limited taxes forgot to include language on how to abolish attacks. Thank you, Justin.
And then Justin, I do have a quick question, do, if we follow the comptroller's recommended language, does that provide any, any kind of safe harbor protections or anything similar to what we usually have?
I mean, I I I don't, no difference, I think, in what we've provided them, I think they're just, they understand and with the conversations we've had with them, they understand the situation, um but you've had, I wouldn't say it's additional safe harbor, I think it's just a a reinforcement that the language suggested is is appropriate for what we're trying to do. And because they've, they had, and I I can't remember all the cities they showed us, but San Antonio did this and they had their ballot, they showed us their ballot language and there was four or five different, um on one ballot, they had four or five different instances of this kind of thing going on. And and the way their ballot language was written, it was similar here, but they also added some, some other additional language in there to to more inform the citizens of what was happening. I think there was, I can't remember the name of the town, but the town, there was one town that did exactly what you're doing and your your language here reflects, I mean, almost verbatim what they're doing. And so since the, in this, since the city had done that and the comptroller signed off on it, um and I think even the Secretary of State on their elections office, it said, signed off on that. So I don't know that it provides you any kind of legal extralegal protection, just to, but for my sake and for your sake, I think that we're not, we're not venturing out into new territory um with with what we're doing. And so I think that's the safety you're gonna find is that this has been, this process has been followed by the comptroller and the and the elections office, Secretary of State. And so if we can match that language as close as possible, then I I think that's, should be our kind of quote unquote safe harbor for that. And so um that's why I think to do it as amended would be something that the comptroller again is just giving the thumbs up on. And so if follow their language, I think that that should help us all.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
A move that we approve when it's twenty twenty one dash zero four pertaining to the joint order of the temporary board of directors of the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District and the City Council of Jersey Village as amended by City Attorney Justin Pre- Redd in this meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? And that will move us to adjourn and we will go to our special session agenda, let me pull that up.
And it's seven thirty four.
Seven thirty four. All right. All right, so I'm going to call to order the special session of the Jersey Village City Council on February eighth, twenty twenty one, starting at seven thirty five P M. Um call to order and announce a quorum as present, Madam Secretary.
Yes.
Move into uh item B, citizen comments, any person who desires to address city council regarding an item on the agenda will be heard at this time in compliance with the Text Open Meetings Act. Uh unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff, city council members are not allowed to discuss the subject. Each person is limited to five minutes for comments to city council. Is there anybody who uh would like to speak at this council meeting, make a public comment?
Mark Malloy.
All right, go ahead, move Mark in.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, sales tax for property tax relief from the T M L. What is the sales tax for property tax relief? The sales tax for property tax relief is an optional dedicated sales tax, the revenues of which offset an equivalent amount of city property tax revenue. How does the sales tax for property tax relief increase city revenue? It does not. The city, the sales tax for property tax relief merely shifts existing revenue from property taxes to sales taxes. What good is the sales tax for property tax relief if it doesn't increase revenue? Some cities find sales tax preferable to property taxes for budgeting or political reasons. So anyway, the other part of this is how does the city, the sales tax for property tax relief operate to lower property taxes? Revenues from the sales tax for property tax relief are subtracted from the city's effective and rollback property tax rate calculations. This has the effect of decreasing property tax revenue by an equivalent amount. If sales tax proceeds exceed the estimate used in calculating the effective and rollback rate discounts, the excess revenues are deposited in a special account and may only be used for debt service. So anyway, basically Singleton was trying to say that somehow that's not gonna affect the citizens paying more in property taxes. And in previous council meetings, when the city finance director was asked if it was going to affect the citizens on how much they would have to pay in property tax, he said that it would be, you know, a minimal amount. Okay, so anyway. The city's fine, you know, like I said, the finance director has said that it could affect the citizens in the amount that they pay for property taxes. And um last year, let's see here, last year, the sales tax for property tax relief fund collected almost two million dollars. You would have to divide the two million dollars by all of the individuals paying property taxes to the city to determine the amount of the reduction for each one of those taxpayers. The sales tax for property tax relief fund, like I said prior, can only be used to remove the city's outstanding debt. So anyway, that's the part I wanted to do on talking about that. And um the other part I want to talk about is if we're talking during the regular session here is that the the Jersey Village City Government has decided not to accept the Citizen Forum Charter Review Board's recommendation that a city council member would be required to resign from their position if the individual chose to run for mayor during their midterm service as a city council member and that there would be a special election to allow the citizens to vote on a replacement. The city government has decided to not put that on the ballot to allow the citizens to make the decision if that's the way they want the charter to be changed. And the way I look at it is the city government does not want the citizens to be able to choose a new city council member. The city government wants to be able to choose that replacement themselves. And the way I look at it is any any one of these positions that is vacated should be that the citizens make the choice on who's going to replace that vacancy, not this current city council. So that's about all I have to talk about on that.
Thank you, Mark. Into uh item C, review ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero two, which was approved on January eighteenth, twenty twenty one, calling the general election for a mayor and two council members and calling a special charter election, eliminating sections one dot zero eight and one dot zero nine, amending sections two dot zero one and two dot one two and providing for gender neutral language and if necessary, take appropriate action. Lori?
Uh yes, Mayor, during the last council meeting, there was discussion about um the particular wording for proposition B. Um and this item is just to uh review that language that will be in on the ballot to ensure that this is what the council wanted. And um there really is no other action but to review the language just to ensure that it is correct.
Okay. So um let me pull up my packet here. Okay, so this item, we're looking at um the item C, and we talked about last meeting, um changing some of the language um as far as uh basically changing the word popular to majority, um gender neutral language. Um and then I I recall us talking about staying hands off with some of the other terminology that um, you know, we 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 should.
Yes, sir, so bas- basically the changes as they stand would only be the um changes from minority uh from po- changing popular to minority and the general neutral. Other than that, that they, that particular wording in the charter will be exactly as it is now, with the exception of those two changes.
Okay, any discussion, any comments from council?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I will just very briefly say, uh for anyone out there who was listening to Mr. Malloy's comments and and they're wondering whether or not this council actually really cares about what citizens have in terms of a say or not. Um number one, I take exception to Mr. Malloy's characterization of the members of this council as not caring about the voice of the citizens, I think it's much more complex than that. Uh Mr. Malloy, having served on this council, knows better than that. And so I'm just going to assume that either he's forgotten in the time since he last was on council or he's intentionally mischaracterizing the discussion that took place. I would encourage anyone who wants to know exactly what discussion happened. This is why we record the meetings, why we put them on YouTube so that anyone can watch. If you're watching on YouTube now, you can go back and look at the other videos and see exactly what discussion took place. I think that the process took place exactly as the people intended when they voted this charter in place. If Mr. Malloy doesn't like it, he can do what people have tried to do in the past, which is to go out, collect signatures, propose a charter amendment. State laws made it much easier than it was when it was originally conceived of. But until he's willing to get out there, knock on doors and make it happen, uh this is the system that exists. And it may not be pretty and we may not all agree with the result, but it's what the people have given us. And so we're gonna put this before the voters because that is the way the charter is written and I look forward to hearing from the people on this. And if there are other changes that need to be made in the future, we'll look at those too.
Well said, uh anybody have any other comments? Yeah, you know, I I I made my opinion clear quite often, I don't wanna have to repeat myself on it. But the level of care that I have for the city and the voice of the people and there are people campaigning right now, um going door to door and knocking in. It is, it is a, it is a humbling experience to to meet your neighbors and talk to them about issues. And um I think there's just about everybody here on council has made themselves available uh at any time to talk, to chat, to uh to to do these things. And, you know, we, we're here, we're here to serve, we're 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 public servants. Uh, you know, I I worked up until five minutes before this meeting started and uh we all really, really, really care about the city, about the citizens, about the voters and about the future of the city. So um I have no problem with people having disagreement, but it does cross the line when someone says that we don't care. I- it's just kind of a trigger for me because I I sometimes I care a little too much, I think. But uh I think a lot of us can can vouch for that, I think a lot of us care deeply and spend a lot of time uh making sure that that we're doing everything correctly, we're doing everything with as much input as we possibly can. And it's not gonna go my way all the time, so I can go your way all the time, but at least you have your say, at least you have your input. Um and there are absolutely methods built into our charter for changing it yourself. Um and it does require uh putting on your shoes and knocking on doors and telling people your opinion. And um you're more than welcome to do that, I've done it, it happens. Um, any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, with that, I'm looking for a motion.
Uh, we don't really need any action on this.
Oh, we just reviewed it, okay. All right, we scroll all the way back up to the top here. All right, so we're gonna move into item D. One, receive the adopted tier plan into your budget from the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Services, Emergency Medical Services District. Lori?
Uh, yes, Mayor, this item is just uh housekeeping, just to make an announcement for the record that you did receive that adopted plan that was adopted by the temporary board for the Fire Control Prevention Emergency Medical Services District. No action other than that announcement is needed.
All right, I will make that announcement. And move on to item D two, uh conduct public hearing on the adopted tier plan, adopted tier budget for the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergencies Medical Services District. Script. I now call to order this public hearing on the adopted tier plan into your budget of the City of Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Services, as Emergency Medical Services District. Everyone desiring to speak at this hearing should complete a public hearing comment card and present the card with the city secretary. Each speaker will have five minutes for this, for present, to present information concerning the two-year plan into your budget. Lori, is there anyone uh signed up to speak?
No, sir.
All right. With that, I will, uh there being no one desiring to speak, I now close this public hearing for the adopted two-year plan into your budget of the City of Jer- Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District. Okay, move into item D three, consider resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero eight, adopting the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District to your plan and to your budget. I finally said it right the first try. Any more, uh any discussion on the budget? Seeing none, I'm looking for a resol- uh motion on the resolution.
Move, we approve resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero eight.
Second, second.
I have a motion in a second, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? Move into item D four, consider ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero four pertaining to a joint order of the temporary board of directors and the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District and the city council on the City of Jer- Jersey Village, uh the City of Jersey Village, ordering a special election to be held on May first, twenty twenty one. And uh this has Lori's name on it.
Uh yes, Mayor, this um this item is to uh join with the temporary board of Fire Control Prevention Emergency Medical Services District to uh in a a joint election on May one for those two propositions that have been uh discussed here this evening. Um and also, uh when we entertain a motion on this ordinance, we will need to uh make the, for the amendments that were discussed earlier in the evening.
Yeah. Thank you, Lori, any uh questions for Lori and more discussion? If not, I'm looking for a motion with the amendments.
A move that we approve when it's twenty twenty one dash zero four pertaining to the joint order of the temporary board of directors of the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District and the City Council of the City of Jersey Village, ordering a special election to be held on May first, twenty twenty one. And as this ordinance is amended in concert with the meeting of the temporary board as read out loud by the city attorney.
Thank you, James, I have a motion and I have a second by Bobby Warren. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? Move into item E one, consider resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero nine. Move into item E one, consider resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero nine, authorizing the joint election agreement with the city of Jersey Village Crime Control Prevention, Crime Control and Prevention District as authorized by chapter two seventy one of the Texas Election Code. Lori?
Yes, Mayor, this is just to approve a joint election agreement with the Crime Control and Prevention District. They are asking that the city take care of the election activities for them. And this agreement lays out which entity will be responsible for for what responsibilities. And we just need a motion on the resolution.
All right, looking for that motion.
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero nine.
Second.
Bobby with the motion, Gary with the second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We're going to recess the special session and move into executive session. Consult with the attorney pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one dot zero seven one regarding the pending lawsuit Charles E. Forrester versus the city of Jersey Village and others in the United States Court of Appeals for the Fifth Circuit. So council is now going to retire to a closed session at seven fifty three PM pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act in connection with the following items. Item one, consult with attorney pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one dot dot zero seven one regarding pending lawsuit Charles E. Forrester versus the city of Jersey Village and others in the United States Court of Appeals for the Fifth Circuit. We return to open session and continue the remainder of this agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded. All right. I think we've got a quorum back, so the closed session was adjourned at nine thirty PM and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. And with that, we will move to adjourn. Thank you, everybody.